I'm going to open the special meeting of the Fairfax Planning Commission Wednesday, August 31st, 2022. Due to the declared state of emergency and to ensure public health and safety by limiting human contact that could spread the COVID-19 virus and pursuant to AB 361 and Fairfax Town Council Resolution, this Planning Commission meeting will be held via teleconference only. There will not be an in-person physical meeting location. Members of the public may watch, listen, and participate in the meeting as follows. Watch on Zoom, HTTPS backslash backslash US zero two web dot zoom dot US backslash J backslash eight one three three four four three nine oh four. To speak during the public comment period, select the raised hand icon and you will be added to the speaker queue and unmuted when it is your turn. Listen by telephone, one six six nine nine hundred six eight three three. At the prompt, enter the meeting ID of eight one three three four four three three nine oh four. To speak during the public comment period, press nine and you will be added to the speaker queue and unmuted when it is your turn. The meeting protocol, the chair will maintain order at the meetings in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, and the commission has a responsibility to be a model of respectful behavior in order to encourage community participation and citizen input at commission meetings. The commission and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motive of commission members, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. And I don't have a roll call on here. Lynda, can you do a roll call?
Kelly?
Here.
Jansen?
Hi.
Newton?
Here.
Acting Chair Swift?
Here, thank you. And the agenda, I want to make, I'm suggesting one change on the agenda is that after the Fairfax Planning, after the presentation tonight, that we have, the Planning Commission have the ability to ask questions, knowing that we'll be coming back for discussion. But if the Planning Commission has any questions, I'd like them to ask that, those before we go to public comments and questions. So with that, would we have motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda with that modification.
Becca.
Okay, I'll call Kelly.
Hi.
Jansen?
Hi, sorry.
Newton?
Hi.
Chair Swift?
Hi. So the Fairfax Planning Commission is holding this workshop to discuss objective design and development standards and solicit public comment. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to interim planning director for comments.
Acting Chair Swift and members of the Fairfax Planning Commission, good evening. I'm very pleased to do an introduction tonight for Andy Flower, who's the project manager and team leader for EMC Planning Group that's been working on the town of Fairfax Housing Element Update. EMC Planning came under contract with the town of Fairfax in April of 2021 and has been working on various aspects of the state mandated housing element update. As part of this sixth cycle Housing Element Update for the period of 2023 through 2031, there is a requirement by the state to go forward and adopt objective design and development standards. Local communities here in Marin County have been working with the county, the county and local communities have put together a toolkit. And EMC Planning has been working in the past with a planning commission on the odds, subjective design and development standards, and it's coming back this evening to give you its approach to customizing, kind of breaking down these development standards, design and development standards to really fit the needs of Fairfax, to provide clarity in terms of expectations for development here in Fairfax, to really support community character here in Fairfax, and to overall streamline the process. So tonight, Andy and his team will provide an overview of the customization approach that they're proposing for the town of Fairfax, and they're really seeking your feedback, planning commissioners, in terms of this approach, and would be coming back to the Planning Commission at a meeting scheduled for September 28th to take your feedback, make necessary modifications as directed, and then look for a recommendation at that September 28th meeting to move this on to Town Council. Tonight, in addition to the objective design and development standards, the odds, we'll also be giving an overview of the project schedule, an overview of that schedule leading through until about March of 2023, and then also in terms of the sites that have been identified to meet the regional housing allocations needs as determined by the state of California and the Association of Bay Area Government, Andy and his team will be presenting a map to show those sites. Those sites, by the way, are really the focus of the environmental review that's required. There will be a full programmatic EIR, Environmental Impact Report, prepared for this project. The scoping session for the Environmental Impact Report has begun. The notice of preparation for that scoping has been sent out, the 30-day comment period started August 26th. So there's a lot of activity right now in Fairfax around the housing element, and I'm very, very pleased to turn this over to Andy Flower and his team to talk about odds and other aspects this evening, and to receive the planning commissions and communities' feedback. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Waltering. I'm Andy Flower, Principal Planner at EMC Planning Group. It's a pleasure to be back with the Planning Commission, and we humbly thank you for accommodating our request for these two special meetings, one tonight and one also in September, to discuss this very important topic for the objective design and development standards, also known as odds. We have a strong team with us tonight. I'm really excited to introduce them to you, and I'm going to be brief because I know we have a lot to cover tonight. So taking place of Opticos, who you were introduced to in the past, who did come up with this toolkit to begin with, and we are working from that, we have ELS Architecture and Urban Design, and representing that company today is David Masonson. ELS has, for 50 years, enhanced the experience of urban life while being mindful of the environment. And David has brought along Ryan Call, who worked for 21 years at ELS. He now has begun his own business, Urban Field Studio. We also have with us Grace Kim from Skamata Workshop. And Skamata Workshop is a collaborative studio based in Seattle of members dedicated to improving the livability of communities by creating memorable and authentic design. I had the good fortune to meet Grace while I was in Seattle. I'm very aware of her work and delighted that she has joined our team to bring you some extraordinary information and be a part of our collaboration. Again, I'm going to be brief, and also we're trying to be brief with our presentation. So you might notice tonight that our presentation is just a little moved around slightly. We've tried to shorten it for you so that we can stay focused on your thoughts, ideas, and concerns. So with that, I'm going to pass the baton to David Masonson to begin our presentation.
Thank you, Andy, and thank you, Director, and thank you to the commission for giving us the opportunity to speak with you tonight on what is a very important topic that a lot of jurisdictions are considering right now. One thing that I wanted to mention is that our, the format in which we're going to handle this is we're going to run through the presentation in its entirety, and then we will field questions after that, as was mentioned previously. So can everyone see my screen? Yes. So I know that back in November of 2020, the commission discussed the Opticos document to some extent and the reasoning behind it. I wanted to give a little bit of a background at the start of this presentation for the benefit of the public, so I apologize for anyone on the commission that probably understands this already, but I think it's a good starting point. So because of SB 35 and SB 9, the cities and towns like Fairfax have to create objective design and development standards, which would apply to multifamily residential. These standards don't necessarily, they don't need to, and they don't deal with single family, and they only deal with commercial as it relates to being on the ground floor of a building that is two-thirds or more residential. So the SB 35 is something that I think you'll see many developers in surrounding communities use as a means to gain ministerial approval, as is SB 9 with smaller projects where they look to split lots, single-family lots into two lots. And the ministerial approval essentially means that the building department can do the full approval. It would not go through any sort of subjective approval process with the town. So the question that, you know, always comes down when we look at these things is how, how do we think about what is objective and what is discretionary? And I think the public asks that question a lot, so we wanted to just be really clear that an objective standard is one that is uniformly verifiable. So the example that we wanted to show today was this idea of setbacks. So the front yard setback requirement is four feet is an objective standard versus a subjective version, which would be the front yard setback is to be consistent with the character of the neighborhood. And the reason that at the state level, they've enacted SB 2035, SB 330, SB 9, is that many communities, and we're based in Berkeley, and I live in Berkeley, so I see this happen frequently, many communities have used the discretionary review process to shut down projects, and that has led to a severe housing shortage in the state, and I certainly see that in my little pocket of the Bay Area that I live in. So as some examples of some discretionary language, what you see on the screen here is from the current Fairfax zoning code. So the things that are underlined in red, creating a well-composed design harmoniously related to other facilities, this is terminology that is not deemed sufficiently objective because it is not really measurable. So this is, you know, our attempt at working through this process is going to be to create something that is hopefully very simple to understand. I think it's very important for us that any landowner is able to actually pick up the document and read it, that they don't need to hire a lawyer or an architect to tell them what they can do with their land. And, you know, the attempt that was made with Opticos to create this very large document is to create something for each community to shrink down and format in the means that's most appropriate for your town. And, you know, Fairfax is just this fabulous place that is, you know, really a result of being designed within nature and topography, and the buildings are of fine scale because they fit into that, and I think that's why a lot of people really like Fairfax. And I think that's going to be our goal, is trying to understand the specific way that Fairfax has been built over the years, and try to create objective design standards that will allow development to continue in a way that will work within that framework. At the very head of the objective design and development standards that Opticos made, it says very clearly that, as underlined, you will need to customize the toolkit. So as many of you know, the initial toolkit is 360 pages, which is far more than I think any municipality would want to take on. And I think that the approach that we're going to show you today is one that will hopefully be reasonably reductive, and will simplify it and provide the ability for people to create the types of projects that are unique, that have the sort of Fairfax quality that everyone loves about the town. So within the odds, it's broken up into a series of chapters, and after the introduction, the chapters basically start from the large scale of multiple blocks, goes down to uses, and then the scale just gets smaller and smaller and smaller until you get to the details, the architectural design details, and we'll talk about how we're handling that. But the way that the Opticos odds handles that is it actually has particular architectural styles, you know, it has craftsman, Mediterranean, contemporary, but it gets down to a lot of detail, and we're going to discuss how we want to modify that, I think, to work best for Fairfax. And then after that section, it follows into signage types, which I'm going to talk about briefly, and then we're going to have a longer discussion about large site controls. So the first chapter of the design controls is the zones, and the way that Opticos designed it is they designed a series of these eight zones, and you select the zones which are appropriate for your community. In each zone, it talks, it gives requirements for where the building can be located, what the size of setback is, how it addresses the street, what the building height is, et cetera. So these are very important controls, so that's why the zoning system is so critical as the first step of understanding what you could do with your property. And when we looked at it, we thought that there were three zones that were applicable for Fairfax. And because the odds, as a whole document, is designed to cover all of Marin, there are some denser zones that would be used in places like possibly Larkspur or San Rafael that have that density. But, you know, the quality and nature of Fairfax is one that is smaller and more neighborhood-based. So we selected these three zones, and I want to go through each one of them, that we selected and kind of why we selected them, and what it would allow in each one of those zones. But we wanted to explain how we then made decisions about which zones would be applied into which areas. So what you see on the screen here is the zoning map for the town of Fairfax, which is broken up into public zones, commercial zones, residential zones, and open area zones. So we've taken the approach with the three odd zones of using the existing zoning map and dividing the zones in a similar manner that the existing zoning is divided. And this way, we make a connection between the two, so it'll be easier overall for people that jump into this to kind of understand where their property stands and what they can do with it. So the breakdown is the highest density zone is the commercial zone, which is shown in purple. That's your traditional downtown. The midsection is the orange, and that is the residential high-density zoning, multifamily residential senior, and the planned development district. And then the single-family districts and the upland residential are in the lowest density zone. So with that as a backdrop, we're going to go through each one of the zones. But we wanted to mention that there were two changes that we wanted to make with the zones. There's two sites. There's the Town and Country site, which you can see here in blue, and then there's the small commercial site down to the south of Fairfax. And these two are commercial zones, but we felt due to their character and their location, in the case of the one to the south, that we would put them in the medium-density zone and not the higher commercial density zone. Town and Country obviously is a special case, and I think that ultimately we'll have more discussion around it, but we thought this was a reasonable starting point. And then to compare, just, you know, to tie in what we're doing with the housing element and everything that Andy is working on, we wanted to provide a view of where the housing element sites are, which you see on the far left, the alternate sites in the middle, and then, you know, where the different zones in the odds would be located. So, you know, this is something, we tried overlaying it, and it was hard to read, but we, you know, Andy and I can answer specific questions, but this is the general thinking behind how these two come together. So for the, we're going to talk about the zones from the lowest density zone to the downtown area. And all of the zones within the odds have a minimum or a maximum, I'm sorry, a minimum story of at least two and a half stories, and then if a developer were to use a density bonus, it would go up to three stories. We can expect that many residential developers will probably take the density bonus, so we do want to be cognizant and have communities be aware that they should, they should take into consideration the density bonus when they review this and make decisions. So this is, this is a typical suburban neighborhood. There are a lot of different options and types of buildings that you could build there, but it keeps in the character of a suburban neighborhood. And we put together some images. These images are not design proposals, but they are just to give you sort of a flavor, and obviously, architecture ranges widely. So, you know, we don't want to use these to suggest anything other than, these are types of development that would be compatible with the design controls in this particular district. For the next district, the T4 multifamily neighborhood, which is a slightly higher density, again, up to two and a half stories without the bonus, three stories with the bonus, it provides a few more opportunities for a little more density, and I think that's appropriate as it, as it kind of bounds around the existing downtown. It provides a little more opportunity to increase housing stock in places that are most walkable to the downtown, which hopefully will help reduce the overall traffic impact. And then, you know, examples of this type of development are seen here, you know, some townhouse development, some low multifamily flats, some courtyard types of buildings. These are the types of projects that you would see as acceptable in this zone. And then the downtown, the zone, the suburban Main Street, you know, the character of downtown Fairfax is great in sort of the grain and the size of the lots, and we want to try to maintain that as much as possible. This again is up to two and a half stories without a bonus and three stories with a bonus. This is a downtown typology, if you will. This means the setbacks at the front are going to go away because you want to have that pedestrian environment. So it would yield projects similar to this, where you're seeing three-floor buildings, you see them coming up to the street, they can provide a nice vibrant downtown scene at the ground floor, they can provide potential living on the upper floors. One of the things that is the largest challenges in development is parking. You know, how parking is handled, what the ratios and the requirements are often kills development because they can be so onerous. Currently, the Fairfax requirements are seen on the screen in terms of providing one space for studios, one bedrooms, two spaces, two bedrooms, two spaces, and three or more two spaces. The odds provided some guidance on this, and I wanted to go by zone, what their recommendation was, and when we get to the end of the presentation, I certainly would love to hear what the commission thinks about this. Parking is a contentious issue, and it's an important issue, and I think it's one of those things that, you know, we need to have a robust discussion about, because obviously neighbors get concerned about, you know, the impact of parking, especially on neighborhood streets. So we want to be able to say that we're providing adequate parking to allow the development, but we also don't want to prevent some development that would otherwise occur. So at the, at the lower density, the suburban neighborhood level is similar to yours, you know, it's one bedroom, or one unit for a studio and one bedroom, it's one and a half, but it's only one and a half spaces for two or more, so it's down by half a space for those multiple bedrooms. For the T4 suburban neighborhood, it sticks to the same standard. So again, the studio one bedroom is one space, which matches, and the two or more is one and a half. And when we get down to the downtown area, the studio one bedroom stays at one, but the two or more bedrooms stays at, stays at one. And now, these are minimums that we're showing. I mean, I think some communities have asked the question about whether you should impose maximums, and I think that's, that's another question that is worth discussing with the group when we get to the end, because we do want to allow a way to provide the type of development density that you want. The added comment I have for the commercial district is this parking only relates to the residential units. The individual commercial tenants, they will have their own parking requirement that's separate from this, so you won't have an issue where you're not providing enough commercial parking. And then another thought that the odds had that I wanted to float by all of you is that they, they have suggested to increase the ability to create affordable housing in Marin to allow unbundling of parking from the project, which is to say that if you were to buy a condominium, you could buy it without the parking. If you were to rent an apartment, you could rent it without the parking, and if you wanted it, you would rent the parking separately. And people, people see this as a way to create a lower entry level for rentals and for condos for people that are willing to go without a parking space. And with that, I want to hand it off to Ryan, who's going to talk about the, you know, from the, I talked about the zone scale, he's going to talk about the smaller scale, which is about site and building types, and I think this is, this is the area where we have really done the most to try to streamline it and make it simpler to understand. So, Ryan?
Great, thanks, David. So Fairfax is pretty extraordinary because the minute you're in town, you realize that there's more than 100 years of history in front of you. And what's, what's extraordinary is, as you stand there and look at this city, you see buildings from multiple eras, you know, whether the building's 100 years old, or 80 years old, or 50 years old, what you see are different ideas about what architecture needed to be at that particular point in time. And the story it tells us today, the story that we get to enjoy, is that this is an authentic place, is an eclectic place, and it was the community that informed or decided, made these decisions about how it was built and how you're enjoying it today. And so those kind of precious elements where the, the community is driving the vision for these buildings and these environments are really important to preserve and incorporate into the design controls that we're implementing. Next slide, David? And so how do you do that? That's a tricky question. There's, there's, in the odds draft that we got from the county, there are about six or seven styles. Well, you'll find six or seven styles on one block in Fairfax, and they aren't necessarily in that catalog. And so, you know, how do we allow for the future residents of Fairfax to inform what the architecture should be and evolve, as architecture always does, as tastes change, preferences change? But we can look for some, what are the universal elements amongst these variety of styles that are here today? And Fairfax has this really incredible scale, you know, the width of the buildings in the commercial district, like your widest one is like 58 feet wide, most of them are 25 to 30. So when you're, when you're looking at one block, you're looking at five or six buildings, and maybe you like three out of five, but I mean, it's just this really great diversity that you're finding in every street experience that you take. As you walk around the city, you'll find in the residential districts that there's homes from every era, and so they vary. So, but a lot of them have this great, very human scale, they're not, they're not, you know, overwhelming, or the walls have a lot of visual interest, the windows have interest, there's porch elements, there's social elements. And so we want to be able to take those big concepts and make sure that they're integrated into the future architecture, so finely scaled form and then finely crafted buildings. Next slide. So as in Fairfax and other places, creative folks come up with ways to blend typologies, to blend styles into really interesting environments. And so this is just one example, it's a very narrow lot, it's in Berkeley, North Berkeley, and there's an old grocery store, and this particular architect, Trachtenberg Architects, decided to create three residential units and did it in a way that is both contemporary and traditional, preserves the past, embraces the future, and, and kind of comes up with a very new solution that's extremely contextual to its historic neighborhood. So he did it through a very So he did it through a very looking at scale, simple forms, it's not cluttered or busy. And these are the things that we can ensure get into the design standards so that you get a very compatible architecture with what you have. Next slide. So buildings with finer grain massing and articulation, again, this is about having buildings that aren't 200 feet long, that have that finer grain and that are reflective of the the existing fabric that you have and building that into the standards. And then also, you know, dictating the specific architectural style or even six could create a lot of monotony. And so to avoid that, I think what we can ensure is that quality materials are used, that materials that touch the ground are durable, long lasting, that these buildings are built in a way that they age well and that their craftsmanship is high quality. And if you look at a lot of historic buildings, a lot of times it's not so much the style, but it's the quality of the craft that is really timeless and appreciated. So looking at those two, two elements, the human scale and the quality detailing and and making sure that there's some flexibility for individual expression, which is a big, another really big theme in Fairfax, can help us preserve some of the same elements that help create the town that you have. Next slide. Again, so simplicity in form. If you over articulated a building with too many ins and outs and you know, busy elements, oftentimes that's where the money goes and it doesn't go into really high quality doors or windows or exterior materials. So our focus is to have enough articulation in the form and massing so that it's not plain, but also be very disciplined in the quality materials so that you get quality, long lasting buildings that age well in your neighborhood. Next slide. The odds have a lot of duplication because there's a lot of different typologies of housing types. A lot of these, they're difficult to 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 create a strict typology sometimes over complicates it. And there are typologies in this list that may not be relevant to the size of lots in your city, which are very small or may not meet what the market needs in order to build something. And so what we want to focus on is take the scale elements, such as how wide can the primary mass be? How wide can the bay windows be? And allow those to be the defining elements rather than a typology or a specific style. Next slide. So in doing this, we can simplify the the standards that we're creating and our initial approach, and this is for discussion tonight, is that we want to, for those three zones, is if you have a 50 foot lot, you'll get a set of rules that really pertain to development within a 50 foot wide lot. If your lot falls under 150 feet, between 50 and 150, you get rules there. And then if your lot is over 150, there's rules for that. And that will allow us to really look at, you know, buildings that need to be small, need a certain set of solutions. Buildings that are medium deserve those solutions. And in a way, we're thinking that that might be more successful to keep the tradition of Fairfax going forward is rich in variety rather than saying, here's six styles that you have to stick to. And then it also allows typologies and architect, different architectural expressions to be mixed into a single project. So there's a little bit more flexibility on the create creative side. Next slide. So David, I'll, I'll hand it back to you. Oh, wait, no, sorry. So that's still my slide. So one way to do this, to keep our, our, our design guidelines book a little slimmer is within the pages, we can highlight which zones particular rules apply for. So in this example here, you've got the T four and the T three work with these planning guiding guidelines and et cetera. So I think we'll be able to really streamline the document. Next slide. And same thing, we want to make sure that as we're looking and we have less zones for for Fairfax than what's shown here. But again, we can make sure that there's consistency and the form and massing of the buildings across the city, but that they're visually different in the way they're they're crafted. Next slide. Great. So again, chapter eight in the odds draft that was from the county was very, very specific. This is what a craftsman building looks like. This is what a Mediterranean building looks like. This is what a contemporary building looks like. And to capture anything representative Fairfax, you would need, you know, 50 more styles. So I think what we want to make sure is that things are human scaled and highly crafted. So focusing on the basic elements, let's make sure that the base has durable materials, that the quote, the wall, the material changes are intentional and they look rational and that the quality of the materials is high. We can look at minimum and maximum roof slopes, making sure that eve materials are a good quality if they're visible. And thinking about the windows and porch and balcony elements, making sure that they're functional in size for actually being in a porch. And then this is also open to discussion. The, you know, do we want to exclude certain materials that are used in really economical construction? And there's pros and cons to that. You know, vinyl windows, T 11 siding, these things sometimes look good for a few years, but they don't age very well. And so, but then they also open up the doors to certain affordable housing. So we want to carefully discuss the pros and cons around those controls. But generally speaking, let's steer away from cheapness and keep buildings simple, human scale. Next slide. What was interesting, looking at the odds, is it was a great attempt at saying, this is, you know, how you ensure architectural detailing, that's a high quality. The challenge is that's only one parapet example, and we don't want the same parapet for a commercial building throughout, you know, all the new development. And so we, we do have to make sure that, you know, it's not uncommon for a developer to take the path of least resistance. And if we spell them the exact recipe, you will get the same recipe over and over and over. And so this is where we're proposing a system where it's more based on the form and scale and quality versus very specific details. Next, next slide.
This is mine.
Go for it.
Thanks, Ryan. Yeah, that's great. So we want to talk a little bit about about signage because it does have a signage chapter in it. And the signage chapter is is done really well, and I think it's very appropriate for Fairfax. You see some examples here in terms of, you know, projecting signs, they also have, you know, examples of storefront signs that go on buildings. This stuff is all great, they do great examples. And and the existing signage criteria for Fairfax does have subjective measures in it. So that that could be a bit of a concern. But I, I think the challenge is that the odds document at its core is for multifamily development. And most of the signage that you, that people end up doing is going to be done by tenants that are commercial. And so they're not going to know that they have to look or whether they're going to apply under this one in the odds or whether you can comply with the ones zoning. So I, you know, when we thought about this, we thought there's a couple of different paths and we'll look for your feedback. But I mean, if, if you were to include the signage package in the odds, it creates a conflict with the existing Fairfax signage code for a tenant that's trying to figure out which signage they would use. In theory, the it would comply or it would apply to a tenant that was in a mixed use building that was two thirds or more residential, but no tenant could know that. So the the other, the other approach is you could leave the section out of the odds entirely, which is our recommendation because there's just not that many instances that that you'll need tenant site, commercial tenant signage in a residential building. You could decide to take that chapter as a standalone and adopt it as as the Fairfax zoning to replace your existing signage code. It's really well done, and I think it is very, very similar to the quality of the sign that you have in downtown Fairfax now. The other, the other option is you could just, you know, you could just leave it out entirely. You know, you could just say, I'm going to stick with this, the zoning for commercial tenants that's already there, and it will just be excluded from the odds because the odds is designed to be for multifamily residential. So that's another question we'll, we'll get to, but I think that's one of those decision trees where it's an opportunity to again, help, help simplify it for for future tenants and and people trying to understand what they can do with their property. So with that, I want to hand it off to Andy and to Grace to talk about the large sites and the the eco village concepts. So Andy, do you want to kick it off?
Yes, thank you, David. When we spoke before, I did bring some photos of Eco Village and and they were well received by the planning commission. So we are exploring this opportunity to integrate in with the odds, some ideas of of cluster housing, some and and I'll let Grace speak more about that as we go forward. So just looking at these three large sites, of course, one of which does not allow residential, and that's the Town and Country Site, that's the one on the lower part of the screen, the one in the middle, Miranda Heights. We all know that there has been a single family development proposed in the past, and we are awaiting, or rather, the town is awaiting the full EIR cycle to go forward. And that's been in stalemate for some time now. So that there was a thought in the past, I know, in in speaking with the former director Ben Berto about the idea of maybe clustering at that site to decrease the impact that development on that site would have for the neighbors. And through this process of the housing element update, we've heard from the property owner at the site on the top here that we're calling the 50 acre site. And and we've, we've heard from this property owner that there is an interest in developing and being a part of the solution for the housing crisis that we're in the midst of right now. So with that, I'll pass this along to Grace.
Great. Thank you, Andy. We, so I've, I've been asked to or tasked with looking at chapter 10 of the odds. Chapter 10 deals with the large sites. And there, in in the way that the sort of out of the box odds, chapter 10 reads is that there's certain criteria for acre sites that are 20 acres and certain criteria for sites that are greater than 20 acres. And then it goes into a lot of detail. And when I look at those criteria and I look at the sites that are available, the the, the, the the odds, chapter 10, out of the box, assumes that you have a flat site in a, in a town that has lots of geography, that is, or, or, yeah, lots of geography that is flat. When I look at the three sites that Andy just had on the screen, two of them are very hilly and fairly steep slope, and one of them, one of them is a bowl. And so really trying to think about how do we think about development on these larger sites to start thinking about how that would inform the development standards that might be written into or rewritten as part of the the odds. So if you want to pass forward to the next slide, so just as a way to introduce kind of the the hoped intent or outcome that we might see on these larger sites, there's an opportunity. And I admit, some of these slides are also flat sites, so I I recognize that. But some of these examples are kind of eco villages that Andy had mentioned before. This one is in Ithaca, it's three villages actually, and they're called the Eco Village at Ithaca. Very different in architectural character, you can see two different neighborhoods and their architectural styles there. There's a lot of open space and green space, shared amenity space. Next slide. The next one is a co-housing project in Chillicothe, British Columbia, a little bit more compact and more of a true co-housing, but all of these projects are are very different and and the thing that they're going to share in common is a little bit more compact development, a little bit higher density than single family and still having lots of access to nature, shared open spaces and community spaces. So that's, this one is Graubswell Co-Housing. The next slide is an eco neighborhood or an eco village in New Zealand called Earth Song. Again, you can see that there's lots of open space in between buildings. I also hope that you see that the the architecture is quite varied in these. But there's a focus on the community space, outdoor, open space, shared space. And as you go through to the next slide, please, David, hopefully you'll start to see how they could be integrated with the natural surrounding that's in in Fairfax. So this one is on Lopez Island in Washington, sort of lower scale development and much more open space sort of in the area beyond. And then if you go to the next one, then we started thinking about the topography of your sites and how to think about new development in in on these hilly sites or in these sort of bowl shaped sites. So looking at a couple of different precedents, this is an example of of, or, yeah, an example of how the, the buildings could be arranged along sort of pedestrian spines and or pedestrian and cars oriented spines. So this, this will make sense as we go through the the rest of the slides here. If you can go to the next slide. So on the left is a proposed development. You can see how it meets the road where there is a fair amount of topography. And it might not be possible, you'll see it in just a moment, some images that show of the sites that are remaining, how development might happen. It's not likely that that center is going to be a pedestrian because of the site, the the limitations of the of the sites that we have left. And there could be ways that it could be pedestrian and vehicular. So the image on the right is actually a co-housing community, a community that has a fire truck access lane down the middle of it. So that's what those two paths that people are walking down are actually the, the, the the road that the fire truck would drive down. So it it serves that emergency egress component. It could also be a way for for people to access their homes if if it's desired to have the cars in the center. But you can see in the picture, it's also an easy way to have that be landscaped and used as a, a walking path for the community. Next slide. So we talked a little bit on our team about streets for whether they're from cars and people. And so we were looking at other examples. So this is a, an example of a booners, which is a Dutch idea, but all of the planners around the US are talking about it and looking at it. And it's really the idea that a car street could be a people street first. So thinking about like, are the streets for people or the streets for cars? This is the same street. So on the right hand side, you can see sort of the more aerial view of it. It's a long street that goes in the middle of this development. And on the left is actually how it gets used on a day to day basis. So the the paved area that you see where the two girls are riding their scooters is actually in the back area on the right hand side. So it is there for people to access homes and get deliveries and things like that. But on a day to day basis, people are using it much like an open space in between. So I think there's a question that I have for you all that we can talk about in a little bit. It's just, you know, should we be writing the development standards to prioritize vehicles or to prioritize people? Next slide. And and so this is a really good example. Both of these projects are developments are on, on sloped sites. You can see the one, both of them incorporate parking, and they just do it in a different way. So on the left, the parking is as a tuck under parking in a garage. So it's not visible from the, from the air or for the street for that matter. The image on the right has the parking access from the center of the site. So the, the, it's tuck under parking for all of these individual homes around the perimeter. But you can see in the center, you basically just get a bunch of driveway and asphalt or concrete. And on the left hand side, you get a little community space with the tree that's preserved and just some, some lovely landscaping and terracing and places for people to sit. So just some, some things to think about as we move forward and try to identify that what the development standards should be. Would love to get some input from you all in terms of, you know, the orientation of vehicles to to people. Next slide. And then some other things to think about is with the topography is how to manage the stormwater. So are there opportunities for us to try to collect rainwater or encourage the collection of rainwater on roofs or in swales? Both of these examples have bio retention and different ways of managing stormwater. Next slide. And then I put this in here, oops, okay. I put this in here as a way to think about a way to think about the sites. So it's the odds, as it currently shows, is, and you saw it with David's presentation, David and Ryan, there's a series of sort of abstract, sort of planery kind of diagrams and things. And so it's hard to kind of imagine, you know, how would this apply to a large site? And I meant to include a slide that has all of those sort of characteristics that they describe and how you would break it down. Unfortunately, it doesn't play out that way. So I, we took, one of the reasons that we were brought onto the team is not only our sort of expertise in co-housing and community-oriented design, but also that we do projects. We're not planners. Actually, we're architects first and planners second. So it's easier for us when we think about these development standards to think about how will they actually get used? And then we work backwards into what are the development standards that we might want to include to result in the development that you all want to see. So we sort of reverse engineered and did the same thing. We looked at one of the sites and looked at, so if on the left-hand image you can see in the, within the dashed black lines, that's the area that we're looking at development. But you can see just on the right-hand side of it, all of the development that exists currently. And these, this is at the bottom of this, of the slope. And so thinking about how do we weave in a road and knowing that it's sort of falling away, how do we tuck into the landscape, a series of different housing options that allows for maybe a little bit more density, how it tucks in, how it could tuck into the landscape and be terraced. So these are just a couple of examples. This is on a hilly sort of landscapes or hilly condition. The next condition, next slide, is more in a rural, like there's rural areas surrounding it. It's still on a hillside. But thinking about how do you tuck in, you know, different scales you could have on one side, on the, if you look at the left, lower-left image or the image at the left, the lower portion, there's sort of a bar that indicates sort of row houses or something like that. And then on the right-hand side, you could have smaller development, whether it's cottages or duplexes. And so how do you, how can you have a mix of those types of things that might relate, you know, more to the topography, sun orientation and the surrounding landscape? And I think that might be my last slide. We're going to have questions. So we forwarded you a set of questions for you to consider. We have more questions that have come up in that time since we've submitted those to you. And I guess I'll stop there and turn it over to you all for questions.
Maybe before we start questions, I'm realizing I probably should have reversed order the slide that I have next. Just to give a little context about the overall project schedule. So we're here tonight at number two. As interim Chair, interim Director Waltering mentioned, we have the Sequo environmental impact report. The NOP has been released and we are preparing for the scoping meeting, September 13th. And next we'll be having a community meeting, number two, it'll be in person on September 10th. More information can be found on our website about that. We also have a council subcommittee meeting the week of September 20th. And that'll be just before our next planning commission meeting, special meeting with you on September 28th. So through this process, we'll be releasing our public draft of that, of, it's a preliminary draft of the housing element. It's not close to being final at all. It's very preliminary and the intent is, it's a little bit like a sequo process. We're getting it out to the public. We're getting as many comments as we can through that 30-day required period prior to submitting to HCD. Because this submittal time with HCD, it's our opportunity to get specific guidance from HCD for how to then come closer to a final draft. So this is a different process than anybody's ever seen before with the housing element. And that's because the cycle six is so different from anything any of us have ever seen before. So we're trying to, what we're moving forward in a way we believe is the most efficient and the most comprehensive and the most inclusive. So we're very excited for everyone to, to join us at this town council meeting, number three. The date is still tentative, so we'll be sure to get the word out on that. And that will be right in the middle of the public draft review period. So these comments can come from all members of the public, including, of course, decision-makers. And every single comment will be brought forward to HCD along with our response to those comments. That's a requirement from HCD. It's very similar to draft EIR process where then the comments are enumerated and organized and there is a response available. So we'll be doing that. And, and then, of course, because those dates are tentative, everything else is a little bit tentative. But our goal is to, to get this draft housing element to HCD as quickly as possible with as many people's comments as we possibly can. So with that, let's go back to the questions. And if we could keep tonight's questions mostly focused on odds, I'm present and available for, you know, a few questions on that project schedule and also, of course, available offline and through interim Director Waltering to answer questions as well. Thank you.
So can we go back to unsharing the presentation?
Yes.
Thank you. So what I want to do now is have questions from the Planning Commission for the presentation. And I'm going to start off with mine, which I don't normally do. But looking at the presentation that we received, it referenced, it had Larkspur, it had pictures of Larkspur in it. Can I assume that presentation is somewhat generic and was provided to the town of Larkspur as well? That's my first question.
The presentation was tailored to Fairfax. And I think, you know, what we talked about in terms of the grain and the character of Fairfax, that is all very Fairfax. You know, the odds in general cover all of Marin. So we do look at a lot of different examples and there are aspects of Larkspur that may have shown up in the show yet.
Okay. And another question, I know it's been a long time since the Planning Commission has addressed odds, but we had meetings on it previously. We also had a subcommittee that worked on odds. And so my question for David and the group is, have you all seen or read through the prior information that was provided and that was done? And the work that was done by the odds subcommittee?
And through the chair, if I could, I'd like to really direct that question to both Andy Flower and David Messington. And if you could respond, please. I'm assuming that you certainly have taken into consideration that information in developing your approach, but could you expand on that, please?
Yeah, I mean, our approach is based on, we actually watched the videos of the meeting in November 2020 and the more recent meeting to gauge, you know, what the, what the commission's interests are and, and, you know, what, how the commission views the town of Fairfax and how the odds process should go. All of that's been taken into consideration as best as we can. But there's, there's nothing that is equivalent to actually being able to sit down with you and talk to you about it in person.
Okay. And then just for clarity, the PowerPoint shows the entire town identified by odd zones, correct? So that, for example, our UR10 zone, which would be, you mentioned, Miranda Heights, is identified as proposed a T3 suburban neighborhood as defined in the odds toolkit?
So you have to keep in mind that these only, these standards only apply to multifamily residential. So if someone is doing single-family development or commercial development, they would not need to comply with the odds.
So, but when we have talked in the past about what is considered multifamily, my understanding that multifamily was more than one. So that could be a duplex, that could be a house and an ADU, correct?
Well, the, you're generally correct. I think, you know, from a code standpoint, ADUs are sometimes handled separately with their own code. You know, the, the odds wouldn't necessarily apply to someone that was to build an ADU in their backyard.
So, but it would apply to a duplex?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Because when we talk about multifamily, usually people think of multiple units. So, and they don't think of something like a duplex. So I just wanted to
That's a great point.
Clear on that. And then the slide you provided on the parking standards in Fairfax?
Yes.
Did not take into consideration the requirement for guests?
Yes, and, and the odds includes provision for guests, and I think those are things we can balance out. You know, I was looking for in, in tonight's discussion was to get the general view of the commission. There are some other small requirements with the parking or options with the parking on ways to handle it that we can look at, but I really wanted to get direction on, on, is Fairfax willing to lower the minimum for two-bedroom and up down to one and a half spaces? Is, is the commission interested in providing a parking maximum? And is the commission interested in unbundling the parking from the residential unit from a sales standpoint to increase affordability?
Okay. I just wanted to be clear on that the parking standard did include the requirement for
Yes.
Yes, which could be on the actual property. Okay. And you mentioned a 50-acre site during the presentation and you had one of our maps identified with several parcels. And I just wanted to be clear that the 50-acre site you were talking about, Andy was the one at the top of that map, if that makes sense?
Yes, that's correct. Cheers.
All right. So I'll go back and take a look at that. So those were all of my initial questions. I'd like to turn to Commissioner Jansen. He has his hand up.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Yeah, my initial question. So I'm, I'm happy to see that the styles are left alone because that's complicated. But it does bring up a next question. The, I presume, and that's the question, that the quality of whatever is going to be built is going to be detailed in Section 8. So instead of having the styles, there will be a new narrative that somehow defines that, which currently does not exist. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. We're retooling those sections. You know, when we look at kind of the character of, of any community, it really does come down to more scale proportions, setback and materiality more than style. And I'm going to let Ryan weigh on this, in on this as well. But when we talked to Opticus about it, one of the comments was that, you know, if we were to leave the styles in, if a developer wants to comply to SB 35, they would essentially need to comply with one of the styles. And if they came in with something that was not deemed that style, the town would essentially have to reject it for being non-compliant, which means that developers would, would take the path, I would assume, and this is just my guess, of copying one of the styles, because that would be the compliance. So yeah, so we, you know, our thought is to provide a section that is much more robust on materials and, and construction. And Ryan, do you want to talk, do you want to feed into that, Ryan?
Yeah, you know, one of the interesting criticisms of the style section is there was only one eve detail for the arts and crafts style. And in fact, every famous arts and crafts architect had all kinds of variations throughout their career on what an eve could be, you know. And so we don't want Fairfax to get cookie cutter development by taking the path of least resistance in the odds. Where we can help direct quality architecture is by making sure that the materials that touch the ground are of a durable, long-lasting nature. When a material turns the corner on a building, it shouldn't be paper thin. You know, it should express the type of material that it is with, you know, proper depth going on the next facade, things like that. And then also, you know, looking at controls such as if you have a multifamily apartment building, can we exclude vinyl windows for, as an example, and go with a higher quality aluminum or a fiberglass window? So things like that, that will create maybe a more, an architecture that ages well. And I think what you'll find in your own community is that a lot of your architecture has aged well. And it aged well because they were simple, elegant buildings that were very nicely built. And that's, that's kind of what we're aiming for is, is not mandating complexity, but mandating simple elegance and high-quality materials.
Yeah, no, understood. Thank you. Yeah. And so you will, that is something that's forthcoming in Section 8. And that was the question, where is that going to be?
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're hoping to kind of get your feel whether this is the right approach. And if it is the right approach, that is how we'll proceed.
I have two more for you. Oh, sorry.
If I could just interject one thing. So I do a lot of affordable housing in our state. And I will say that one of the things that, and I also work on design guidelines for other municipalities around the state. And one of the things that's, that I want to caution both our team and the planning commission is when you become really specific and prescriptive about materials. So if you say no vinyl windows or yes to stone and, you know, when you start to become really prescriptive in this current climate, the construction climate, it will mean that nothing gets built because the prices are so, they're insane right now, construction costs. So just wanting to make sure that, that you don't preclude good development, good projects just because you're limiting and being prescriptive about specific materials. I think the idea of quality materials and materials turning the corner and, and, you know, being true to what, what the material is makes a lot of sense so that doesn't look and come across as being cheap and sort of stuck on. But I think you also need to be cognizant of developed, you know, actual developers and actual architects and actual contractors need to be able to construct these things for budgets that actually works. So to not paint yourselves into a corner by being super prescriptive about materials.
That's a very good point. Thank you. Yeah. Two more things. One of them is, so if you look at the, what I saw in the presentation, the T3, and actually, most of them, it's all projected on flatland. Whereas your T3 topology in Fairfax, probably for 95% is on a hillside. So will that be updated, changed to reflect that? Because there's a complexity to it that you cannot see in this template.
Yeah, so there are specific slope standards, which I excluded from this. I think I actually may have, I may have included it in the show that I provided.
There's one, yeah.
Which talks about how the, how the slope standard works and how the bonus would be applied to slopes. Certainly, we understand that, you know, part of what makes Fairfax, Fairfax is, is the terrain that, that everything is on. And, you know, the odds was built to be kind of simplistic, so it wouldn't get into those topics and it handles the slope separately. But we definitely agree with you and we acknowledge that there is some translation that will have to be done there.
Okay, thank you.
The one thing I want to add to that is when you do drive around Fairfax, the difference between an upslope and a downslope lot really requires two really different solutions. How your car gets onto your site, you know, on an upslope lot, you're usually right at the street. There's no setback. You can't do it. And then on a downslope lot, you can't put a porch on that house. It's 20 feet down the hill. You know, so there's these kinds of things that we really have to make sure we have some practical solutions for.
Right. Yeah, yeah, I live here. I know. So last one then on T3 in the presentation. So your T3 SN is a detached site. The photography as a sample that's shown are all attached houses. So I think there's something wrong there. That's very confusing.
So the, the T3 allows for, you know, when they did it with the typologies, they allow many, many types of multifamily. many, many types of multifamily projects. It's just more of a scale issue. So yes, the examples are attached, which would be allowed if someone were to do multifamily, but it wouldn't apply to someone that's doing a single family. And it's a lower density. So you are going to get townhouses and things like that. You might get three story buildings with flats. You might get more cottage development. You know, there's different forms of multifamily development that could be allowed in that area.
The other really interesting control that's built into the Opticus thinking was the idea of how long a set of a multifamily can be. And so when you look at their different zoning categories, the length of building wall varies depending on the scale. So David and our team, working with Grace, making sure that things are buildable. What we're going to do is we're looking at organizing this by lot width. And so we can really look if we have a 50 foot, a 75 foot or 150 foot lot that we're we're looking at, how does the car get in there? How does the how long are these facades roughly so that it has a Fairfax human scale? And so I think when we get that draft in front of you, we'll be able to have a pretty detailed conversation about are these controls appropriate for Fairfax?
Yeah, the 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 wall along the street in the photography, some of them are they're seriously long. That's more than 100 feet there.
Yep.
Continuously flat with no, yeah, okay. That's my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Kelly.
Thank you. I think let's see, I lowered my hand there. Okay. I think one of a group of my questions might be able to be solved with your last statement there about receiving a draft of the document. What I think I guess I missed it. What is the plan? Maybe this is a question for you, David. Is the plan to distribute a draft for review and comment? And what is that?
So our our target is to produce a draft by September 21st, which will be a week in advance of the September 28th meeting. Yes, tight, very tight timeline. Andy, do you want to speak to the process, you know, in terms of review and how many rounds of review it might have?
Well, our our goal is to to have that review with a resolution at this next meeting so that we can move this through to to counsel for for their potential adoption. That's our hope, but we'd we'd love to hear feedback about what what your needs might be.
Okay, well, I'm my I'll just make a comment before I start asking my questions here and maybe it'll temper the response to the questions. And the comment is that I'd love to see a draft as soon as possible. I I would I would love to sort of be able to dig into some of the details that you'll see that I have questions on and be able to understand that the document holistically, I think, would be a lot more helpful. The presentation tonight was great, by the way. It's very informative and I appreciate all the work and good thought that's gone into it. But to see the document would be fantastic. So let's see. The it's been a long time since just the zones and the definition of them has been presented to us. Do we have time tonight for you to actually take a step back and explain why the zones that you've proposed us using were selected and why the ones that you proposed we not use? Why? Why have you made that decision? Can we? Do you have time to do that?
We do. Do you mind if I'm going to bring up the the slide that is relevant to that? Because that's a great question. So okay, so the these are the eight zones, the ones that I selected, the ones in orange. The T three edge neighborhood. What the first thing to say is that a lot of these are very similar. So it really can be splitting hairs. The T three edge neighborhood is very similar to the T three suburban neighborhood. I we selected the T three suburban neighborhood because it has slightly smaller setbacks. And walking around Fairfax, you know, one of the characters is that that houses do vary in their distance and setback, and some of those setbacks are smaller. So we felt from a Fairfax standpoint, allowing slightly smaller setbacks would give more range of opportunity for how people build, would create more variety and would allow buildings to be, I guess, more more in a Fairfax style. You know, Ryan and I were discussing all the different sort of residential, single family typologies in Fairfax. And you know, there's these examples of these very small garages that are like right on the road that are separate from the house. That's kind of a relic of a of a previous era. And that we want to, we want to, you know, have an allowance for that sort of thing to be created. So that's why the T three was selected. And then the the T four suburban neighborhood, small, the next one up was a good logical step in terms of providing a little more density, a little more variety. But it did not get to the extent of the T four core neighborhood, which we thought, you know, you can just look at the picture here. We thought that would be just out of scale for what Fairfax is. And then when we got to the downtown, you know, there's there's a number of options here for how to handle a downtown, but clearly Fairfax is not a T five. And, you know, between the T four suburban main street and core main street, we really felt that it fell under the the smaller scale. And the scale still allows up to three floors, but a three floor building would still stand the tallest in downtown Fairfax. So that that was the thinking behind them. I mean, I I think these these three felt like providing the most opportunity for Fairfax to be unique, but also keep within the typology and style that it is today.
All sounds great. I I think that that was similar to what we had been presented to us before. I don't really remember why having less has been, but it all makes sense from what you said, and I appreciate that.
Yeah.
The zone criteria. Have you received any specific comments on the criteria that goes along with those zones? Just specific numbers of setbacks, height, requirements that are set up in that zone criteria?
Yeah, I mean, that that is part of our process is we are going to sort through each one of those and and, you know, work with the site design, the setbacks and how each of those relate to Fairfax and then how the building relates to the site. So I mean, we are have, we have to edit all of those. We can't, we can't kind of just, you know, cut, cut and paste those in full cloth. Opticus did take a pass at Fairfax and I have looked at that pass. They did use the T three, the lower density T three with the larger setbacks, which is the edge neighborhood instead of the T three suburban neighborhood. But again, I think the rationale for the for the T three suburban neighborhood, having slightly smaller setbacks gets Fairfax better. The but the, you know, it does really split hairs. I mean, these are all very similar similar zones. And then they also provided a T four open zone, which is essentially what I provided. But it can be a separate zone that can allow for more ground, more varied ground floor uses. And, you know, your commercial district is, you know, pretty pretty logical in in where it is. So I don't know that there is a ton of reason to provide an open zone outside of that unless the town of Fairfax saw the opportunity for growth in the downtown. You know, that could occur over time. So.
So I guess specifically to drill down on this one, the criterion, the the numbers, the literal criteria will be adjusted in your process moving forward to sort of cater towards Fairfax?
It will be. And so looking at, so this is an example of of the spread of sheets that you would get for a zone. It talks about the parking and the frontage, the signage, the encroachment, the placement. We are going to take this and fine tune it. I mean, if if, you know, at the discretion.
You're not sharing your screen, just so you know.
Thank you. There we go. So this is an example of, you know, three of those pages that cover those items at the discretion of the commission. If you decide that you don't want to include signage standards, we would remove the signage section. We are going to have to look, you know, at all of the setbacks and building forms and things to make sure that they are appropriate and we're going to have to adjust them as we go through it.
Okay, understood. Have you, in your process, have you received public comment or comments from the the focus group or the town council on any of that specific data?
We have not received public comment. I mean, we've watched the meetings, but we have not received public, like any written public comment.
Okay. But that's going to be part of the process. So you will take comments on that draft document and consider it as you move forward?
Absolutely. And I mean, we we are hoping, you know, beyond the robust discussion tonight, we're hoping that we do get public comment because we would love to, you know, this is this is your town and we would love to know what everyone thinks.
Great. The the images that you showed in the three story example of the downtown area appeared very tall. And I think you just alluded to it that they'd be taller than anything we have in town. Are those equivalent to what's currently set up in the criteria?
It does. It does.
Maybe you could show that image.
Yeah, I can show that. It does allow for up to three floors. And if you're assuming a commercial ground floor, which would be taller, typically a commercial ground floor will be a 15 foot floor to floor, whereas the residential floor will be 10 above it. You know, this would be something similar to what you could see. I mean, the outcome may be quite different architecturally in Fairfax. And I think what Ryan was alluding to was this this idea that that one of the great things about downtown Fairfax is the fine grain. And you know, the the 25 and the 50 foot storefronts and how there's so much variety. And I think it is, you know, you know, that if that is all parceled out, which much of it is, it will remain that way. So it will be a smaller scale in that respect.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that everybody did notice these images as an example. And prior to reviewing the criteria, I just want to make sure that we all took a second look at this image. This these images are a bit alarming to me. I'll just tell you that right now. And whether it's what you would really be proposing, similar to what Commissioner Swift was pointing out, this would be a huge impact on Fairfax.
I will say that, you know, we we try to demonstrate these images demonstrate what someone would be able to do with the density bonus. If if someone elects not to take the density bonus, then they would be capped at two and a half floors. So it would be somewhat shorter. And we don't know how that, I mean, we don't know, but we wanted to show you kind of what the the high end would be.
Yeah.
It also assumes that somebody is assembling all of these individual lots. Right? So if developers are not able to assemble all of these, it might be that the development is much smaller.
Yeah, it's a good point. I mean, with a lot of the the smaller downtown lots, I mean, going multiple floors isn't always realistic, you know, so.
Understood. Yeah, I I think that the tenor of your presentation was a bit of a shift for us tonight, at least in my opinion. I I'm familiar with the LS and you all do fantastic architecture and then very aspirational sort of high hopes for what could be developed in Fairfax. I think in the past and the stage it's been set for us is more of a protective stance and understanding that developers are going to come in and not necessarily have those same aspirations. And so I'm concerned about showing things that are of that size and bulk that might not be of the nature that we would like in Fairfax. Anyway.
That's a, that's a, that's a great point. And I think we are, you know, to the best of our ability, want to hedge those situations by making sure that what is built is built well and has that that quality to it. So it does fit in with the other quality buildings, even understandably, if it's a floor taller than what is traditionally there.
Right. So that's a great transition to my next question. I'd like to dig in just a little bit to how quality how you perceive that quality can be mandated with the odds. Having written some specifications and performance specifications in my past, I I think it's difficult. It's very difficult to try to define quality without being too specific. I think Ms. Ken, you're sort of alluding to that also. You can rule out things by making things too expensive or things could just be, you know, you could rule things out that could be innovative and we don't, you know, don't define them. And that would be unfortunate for us. So the question, I guess, to you is how do you define a durable material? How do you actually do it? And what do you, what are you envisioning in your odds document?
Well, before I let Ryan kind of take this one, you know, I I think what you said was really important in that we we do want this to be a performance based code and not prescriptive, because I think you know, the sort of the architectural styles that were there, you know, the there's a lot of developers that would just put applications on the building and it would look cheap. And a lot of the, you know, when you talk about, you know, high quality materials, you know, earth materials, things like that, stone, bricks, things like that, we want to make sure that those material materials, you know, don't appear to be the face brick and the face stone, that they do have the appearance of of weight and thickness. But Ryan, do you want to pitch in on that?
Yeah, I mean, I think Grace did a great job of articulating, you know, there are some concepts that we need to convey, which is authenticity. You know, if you're going to use a material, it has to be done in in a way that speaks to that, what that material actually is. So we do need to incorporate into the document enough examples to tell that requirement. And then other other things that we want to make sure we do is that when a material is applied to a facade, that it doesn't have the stuck on or the paper thin qualities. So then we need to specify that, you know, the material must turn the corner X distance, which we need to work on, you know, and formulate and then run by your team to see if those qualities are acceptable so that, you know, it doesn't look cheap. Looking at how the materials touch the ground, we have to make sure that there's there are backings and things that don't allow thin tiles to be shattered or stucco to be cracked. Or, you know, just kind of when things get cheap, you know, they don't last. So we'll be looking at those sensitive points. And then as David described, we'll have specification for or we'll be specific about the types of materials that are appropriate roughly. Where you're where we need to be flexible, though, as you say, is we don't want to block innovative materials. So we're going to have to really look at those sentences very carefully and how they're worded so that we do get that quality assurance, but we don't get the we're not restricting from unforeseen material developments or things like that.
Does that, does that answer the question? It's a tricky question.
Well, it's a tricky issue. And I'll be anxious to see how it's resolved. You know, this has always been, I believe, the crux of the the issue with making sure that the lasting impression of what a developer builds in Fairfax will be of the nature we want to appreciate in Fairfax.
Yep. It is so important at the ground level, at the pedestrian level, the materials that you can touch have to be of a texture and quality that that don't feel cheap and don't look cheap. You know, I think that's so important to create a strong, vibrant pedestrian experience.
Okay. I think my last question is about the housing typologies that you showed and sort of the alternative. sort of the alternative living environments that you showed, which is all very exciting to me. Can you explain to me how we would mandate alternative housing typologies in an odds document?
So a lot of, and I think you're referring to the, the part that Grace presented. So there are going, you know, we are going to, in the large site section, you know, allow for multiple structures on a site so that it can create that sort of arrangement. And, you know, part of the large site section, we're gonna have to take, it's very lar- the, the site's lo- I'm sorry, the section is long and deals with, you know, as you mentioned, very level sites. So we have to change it to be a little more congruent with what's there. But to, 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 to speak to how buildings are clustered and relate to one another. So Grace, do you want to add on to that?
Yeah, the only thing I'd add on would just be, you know, we'd be looking at incentives. So it could be that there are, is more density allowed if you provide some of these amenities? And, and some of it might be just, you know, for sites under twenty acres, it might be that you just need to just do certain things in terms of open space or shared spaces. And then for the larger sites, you might have incentives to, to sort of get more of those things. And I, I don't know that we would be looking for like one big park, because these sites are not conducive to a singular open space or singular type of amenity. So how do you weave in those types of amenities and spaces that are meaningful and useful? You know, nobody wants to create open space that nobody uses. So we'll be looking at how to provide incentives to, to, to create some of that behavior that we were, would like to incentivize.
And I think that the scale and sort of the clustered nature of some of those buildings on a large site is definitely something we'd like to pursue. I think the selling point for me was the, the alternative social environments that you were describing that they were used for. But there's not really a way that we can mandate those type of things, right?
No, that doesn't, I mean, it's, it comes down to the marketing and, and who moves in. Yeah.
Right. I mean, there, there's lots of, you know, ways we could say, well, these buildings would be great co-housing environments. But then if they're not, maybe they're, they don't end up being as successful as a building type is what I'm concerned about.
Yeah, I will say that people are pretty smart in that if, I also say kids are very smart in that they'll see things and use them in ways that the grownups don't expect them to. And so I think that will be some, that will be sort of our task of trying to figure out how do we codify in, in, because we cannot, we've sort of moved away from like the whole idea of trying to mandate eco-villages, because eco-villages, like co-housing are an intentional way to live together. We can't mandate that, that doesn't translate into a architectural thing. So what we're tasked to do is try to figure out how do we articulate some of those physical characteristics that might be conducive or, you know, sort of set the stage for, for that good behavior to occur. It's a little bit like, you know, we can't prescribe good architecture. We can try to put in place the, the guidelines that will do it. It's really up to the, the proponents that come forward and the residents that will live there in, in terms of how we do it. But we can try to outline the intents that we would like to see and try to codify those in very in very concrete ways, subjective ways.
One of the things that, that helps create that, and there's an example, three doors down from my house in Berkeley, is having, having sort of shared amenity or open space. And the development down the street, they have drive courts and, and everyone parks in their garage. But then the, the whole group of people, you know, they'll come out and use those areas for movie nights and parties and things like that. And it just has to do with the relationship that they're sharing a common amenity, which is this outdoor space. And if they do that, it does start to engender that. You can't force it, but it does kind of create that relationship.
Great. Thank you. That was it for me.
So Commissioner Newton?
Thank you. I really appreciate all the effort that's gone into this. I'm really excited about seeing allowances for more creativity than what I had originally feared we were gonna wind up with. So I just think that's great. I apologize since I, I lost connectivity with this meeting for a little bit around eight o'clock. I missed most of Commissioner Acting Chair Swift's questions. So if you guys already answered some of these questions, I apologize. So the way I understand what we're discussing about, what we're discussing is these standards would allow for ministerial approval of projects. Is that correct?
It would for multifamily projects and not commercial, not single-family.
And potentially the large sites, the large sites could be developed. I mean, and I'll have my team weigh in if I'm saying this out of, out of turn, but the large sites could be developed as, as, you know, single-family neighborhood, if that is something that we had, would allow. So I think that's one of the things that we are trying to think about, like the scale of the development that it would be allowed on these large sites. If there was a development that included some cottage style, some single-family, as well as the higher density, because that balance of things was desired, those would all be reviewed together under odds.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that clarification. And the bonuses that would take it potentially up to a third story that we see, are those, those are tied to affordability or? And that would last like a certain time period, right? It doesn't last forever. It's affordability for the next whatever, how many decades?
Be restricted. Yeah, it's according to, well, that's another piece of the puzzle that interim director Waltering may be leading within this next year is, is inclusionary requirements.
And so what options would a homeowner have in terms of deviating from the standards? Could they come to the planning commission for a permit if they wanted to deviate for a particular project that deviated from these standards?
So if they're not looking for, to take the SB thirty-five route, then they could elect to go through discretionary review. But at that point.
Not for a single family, though.
You know, sa- single family is separate.
We're talking the multifamily.
Multifamily, right. You, they could, they don't have to take the SB thirty-five route. It, you know, from a development standpoint, there just aren't any assurances. So that's why we, we tend to believe that most developers of multifamily will go through SB thirty-five.
And if, if they opted to go the route of the permit, so then in that scenario, the existing subjective standards that we have currently might be applicable unless we decided to change them, right?
That's my understanding. Andy, do, can you like confirm that's your understanding as well?
Yes, I, I believe that's true. That is optional by the developer. If, if they, if they preferred the discretionary review, then they could go that route.
Okay. And how, I saw in one of your slides, the specific standards identified as potentially being more subjective. And, but I'm just wondering about the ones that are in our code that are already, in my view, objective. We've got, you know, existing setbacks. We've got creek setback, ridge line ordinance. And I'm just trying to understand how those existing standards, which in my view are.
Yes, that's a great que- that is a great question. So yeah, so things like creek setbacks and things like that, they, they still apply to the sites. You know, the, the Fairfax zoning code does have a combination of subjective and objective. You know, if you were a developer of multifamily in your near creek, you would have to comply with the creek setback requirements. And then if you wanted the, the SB thirty-five route, you would have to comply with the odds as well.
Okay, so for some of these large sites, we've got ridge line ordinances that would, in my view, also potentially for the two, the fifty-acre one and the almost hundred-acre one. Those standards would be applicable, correct?
Yes.
We also have existing language in our current general plan about the views from downtown. And so we have language in our open space and conservation elements about protecting the views of the ridges and the hills from the downtown area. And in the past, we've definitely seen that the three stories in the downtown has the potential to block the views. And we've, you know, pointed that out in various town council meetings, not the planning commission, but, you know, the, the community. And so in my view, if we're talking about third stories, especially in that downtown area, we're gonna be potentially implicating those other parts of our general plan that sort of require us to preserve the views from downtown.
That's a great, that's a great question. And that is something I'll have to research unless, Andy, you happen to know whether you said, view shed ordinances would be able to be superseded. Great question.
Had some, yeah, I've had some experience with view shed ordinances and, and being a principal planner in Monterey. It's, it's so hard to not think of them as subjective. It's so hard to quantify. I know we attempted to do so as a city there. So that, let's, let's look into it, see what we can come up with.
Yeah, I'm not sure about the ordinances. Obviously, the ridge line ordinance is a, you know, an ordinance. But what I'm talking about is the descriptions in the general plan in the conservation element, the open space element, about the importance of these areas from looking up at the hills from the downtown area. So I think that in terms of thinking about density bonus, third floors, we don't want to do things that are gonna contr- be contrary to the overriding general plan, in my view. Anyway. What happens if there's property where the standards cannot be met? Like physical limitations?
Yes, there, there is a portion of the odds. I, I couldn't show everything tonight. There is a portion that deals with non-conforming situations, whether you have a tree or a utility or, you know, some other oddity with the site. There are, there's a whole section on, you know, each one of those conditions and how it would be dealt with. So that, that is covered.
Okay. Would these standards allow for a round building?
I don't see why not. Ryan, what do you think?
They would allow it. I mean, basically, as long as the round parts of the building do not encroach into the setbacks, you would be allowed to have curves in the building. And that's part of it where we want to make sure that we're giving people, you know, enough room to have a logical, you know, project to build. And, but certainly we would not ban curves or things like that.
Okay, good answer. So finally, and I don't know who this one's for, but on the slide about the zoning of the town and country that looks like Deer Park, can somebody please explain what that was about for me?
Okay, so I think, let me just pull up the slide.
It's like the blue arrow with the outline of the two properties.
Okay, that's a great question. So, so we, we tried to, you know, use the existing zoning to divide up the odds zones. The two sites that are shown in blue are the two that we, we, we felt couldn't necessarily conform. They're both commercial sites. The one to the south is, is that event venue. It is in a very, you know, sort of forested area. We just felt that it, you know, making it compliant to the commercial guidelines of the commercial zone didn't make a lot of sense where it was. So we took it down to just the multifamily zone. For Town and Country, you know, it's commercially zoned. We, you know, we felt that ultimately it, it'll get built out as, as something that is primarily residential. But, you know, I think that one is much more of a mystery in terms of how we treat it.
Okay, yeah, I think that one's much more of a mystery in terms of how the town will treat it. Okay, those are my questions. Thank you very much.
And, and, and just to add on, you know, the, all of the discussion that Grace had, i- i- has been talking about with the cluster development, you know, that Town and Country is one of those large sites. So it's one of those sites that we think about for those standards.
So if that's all the questions, I want to open it up for public comment. So Tamela, do we have?
Yeah, I don't see any quite yet, but maybe we'll just give a moment for hands to raise. And now they are raising. And the first on the list is Frank Egger. Hi, Frank. Go ahead and unmute yourself and go ahead with your question.
Good evening. Frank Egger, Meadowway, representing Save Fairfax this evening. The proposal before the planning commission, if approved, will eliminate public hearings on many large and significant projects, stripping town residents of their right to comment and influence the development decisions that will have a profound impact on their lives, their neighborhoods, and for many small businesses, their livelihoods. You know, the public has been given twenty-four hours to review sixty-seven pages of a staff report. Totally, to- totally unacceptable, but that, that's, it is what it is, I guess. Page four, it, it, it talks about that the, the town will review new multifamily developments and mixed and residential mixed-use developments ministerially or over the counter against objective standards instead of through a more sub-subjective design review process open to interpretation. Fairfax should not have to give up its zoning ordinance to comply with RENA. The state law defines objective standards as one that involves no personal subjective judgment by a public official. That's interesting, isn't it? This takes a planning commissioner or council member out of the picture. Consultants and staff will determine all future development. The front yard setback is four feet. That's on page seven. W- w- we don't have a four-foot setback, front yard setback anywhere in town with the current codes. Page nine says, the Marin County Objective Design and Development Standards, ODDS, is a document intended as a starting point. It's three hundred and sixty pages, and it was not intended for full adoption. From what I've read, it's consultant-directed. Fire and evacuation issues are ignored. Water availability issues are ignored. Yeah, increasing public sewers is not even discussed. Page, page sixteen, the new draft ODD zones basically throws out Fairfax's current zoning ordinance. You know, Fairfax has al- already discussed allowing five-story buildings on School Street Plaza and Burntown and Country Club. The, at page thirty-one, properties with four or more units allows all off-street parking to be sold or leased. Wow, that's interesting. If you're on page forty-nine, it talks about the three large sites. You know, Fairfax's zoning has protected our small-town character. for over five decades. And, and, and right now, you're asking the planning commission to, to make, to answer a bunch of questions like, do, do the zone designations make sense? I would say no. You know, what, and then number five is what incentives do we want to offer to make this option attractive to developers? Obviously, this is turning Fairfax over to developers. The green spaces shown in some of the examples, so lawns, nice green lawns, but I wonder where that water's coming from to keep them green. The the Fairfax, Fairfax residents want to preserve and protect the character and quality of our local neighborhoods, and they also want to protect our unique local businesses. They do want affordable housing, appropriate affordable housing and real affordable housing. Fairfax is no longer enforcing its formula business plan. We're, we're going to end up with Jack in the Boxes and McDonald's here in Fairfax. If Fairfax wants to make sure that new developments respect community concerns, and this should be obvious, the interest of local residents and small business owners must have a higher priority than what that might be most convenient for developers. Town residents need to have the ability to comment on proposed projects and have a real impact on what happens when projects are proposed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Frank. Any other public comments?
Next is Mallory.
Hi. First, I want to say I, I, I didn't get into the beginning of the, the conversation. Maybe I joined around eight, but I did hear Brett, and I, I think he's on the same page that I would be on. I, I think when we, we, we get builders who are not familiar with Fairfax, I, I don't want Fairfax turning into Corder Madera or Mill Valley, which it's starting to do anyway. And I don't want to see tall buildings. I'm two, two, two stories. I might stretch to two and a half, but definitely not three and not, not these cookie cutter that look like they've been here for a long time, but they don't look like that at all. Buildings that are, are being built and, and drawn. So they look like they fit in. The people who, who are doing this, they don't understand the na, none of the consultants we've ever had really understand the nature of Fairfax. And they look to San Diego and other places and want to make it those little, what they call little towns. This is a little town that has been this way for quite a while. I don't mind things changing, but not to the extent where it just becomes a cookie cutter. Oh, it's going to fit in. There were buildings in, in Stinson that got, that got burnt recently. How they're replacing them and how they're building them now is, it works with what the town is about. And I want to see people who are going to build here to work with what this town is about. And when they're thinking it, it's about, you know, San Diego or someplace else, it's not. Fairfax is very exclusively itself. And it doesn't really match with any other places in Marin or South Bay for that matter. And so I would like to see the integrity of Fairfax being kept, the integrity of Fairfax. Thank you.
Next with their hand up is Brenna. Brenna, go ahead, unmute yourself.
Hi, I just had a quick question. If public comment opened on August twenty-sixth, where do we find the documentation to review and comment? And that is, that's it, because I'm having a hard time finding it. Thank you.
And maybe when we get into the discussion, staff can address that question to the public. Any other?
And there is one more hand. I guess we're holding the answer to that one. And Michael, go ahead.
Oh, thanks very much for receiving my comments. I would like to start with, I really appreciate David and Ryan's input into the quality, and I agree that quality never goes out of style and style never goes out of fashion. I had presented a different presentation this evening, but in looking at the direction the two of you might be bringing this forth so we can have a quality product, I will reserve some of those comments for maybe later time, because I would like to see this direction. That said, I did hear and see a couple of comments such as, my property is in a bowl. My property is a very flat, lidar-supported-by FEMA piece of property above the five-hundred-year floodplain, which is really the only parcel in the town that can accommodate really any of this housing without destroying our neighborhoods. I also have a fourteen-inch sewer line that uppercates my property that was designed for eight thousand homes. So again, it's really the only place that we can save the integrity of our neighborhoods and do something very thoughtful. What I don't want to see that's incited by earlier comments is to really have such a objective standards that are in place that we really get a cutter project that looks like everywhere else in the state. We are a unique community. And I invite David, because of your comments, and Ryan, to please come to my property and look at it. And if you see the property and you understand the beautiful trees that are on that property, I'm hoping to really encourage something unique to our community that can really be special. And I truly believe my property makes up opportunity. And I would like to see it on the housing element, so it can be an integral part of not just today, but for the Fairfax for the next fifty years. So I'll reach out to you. I really hope the two of you will take me up on that offer, because you'll see something special. Thank you.
And I see no more hands at this time.
Thank you. So I'm going to bring it back to the commission for discussion and feedback. And I know there's also a set of questions you all want to ask us, but I'd like to kind of get the initial discussion and then address maybe the questions if that's possible. And I know we're running late as I figured this is such a an important topic that we would be spending more time on it. So with that said, I'm going to go first again, and I don't normally do this, but I echo the comments and concerns of some of the commissioners that we're not of the timeline ahead of us and that we're not getting for odds, you know, the amount of time we need to absorb material brought to us to be able to come back with some, you know, good comments and questions and have the time to study the package. I know in the past, so I just want to, you know, put that out, that's a concern. And I know in the past, I don't know how applicable this would be. We've had an odds subcommittee. I don't know if that's feasible for some working with perhaps a couple of our commissioners on this before it's brought to the full planning commission to, to review. So I'm just leaving that as, as a thought as to what I've seen tonight in general discussion. As many have said, the, you know, the PowerPoints don't reflect Fairfax or the topography. Nothing in here is anything we've talked about for public safety. We have, when we talk about parking, we have many roads in Fairfax that don't meet the standard. We've got narrow one-way-in, one-way-out roads. In fact, two nights ago, we had a fire, a structured fire up here in the Cascades, up a narrow one-way road. So when we talk about parking, I will say my thought on parking is more is better in this community to keep cars off the road and to recognize the fact that people use cars. We need cars here, you know, however they're powered to get around most of the areas in town or not when you look at odds, descriptions within walking distance of a commercial or downtown area. So I am for increasing the parking, not utilizing the odds standards for that. People or cars, again, that gets back to, you know, our topography and needing cars. And in a lot of our areas, you know, where it's not kind of a communal area when you look at what's built out already. As far as bundling or unbundling the parking, I would unbundle the parking. And then signage, I would leave any signage out of this and leave us with our current signage requirements and, and ordinances. I think the less that goes in here that allows for what we have existing now is important. So I think those were my general comments, and I'll look to others, and then you all can ask us the questions that we may not have answered in our, in our discussion. Commissioner Jansen?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I have a bunch of detailed things, but there, I, I will postpone that a little later or when we get to documents. But listening to all this, I, I, there's suddenly something that doesn't add up to me. I think what former major Edger expressed, I think that's of concern to everybody, but it's a situation we got forced into by new state legislation. So we have to find a solution for it. The biggest hurdle in that whole thing is the discretionary review. So by, by getting rid of that, we are able to at least keep control over what's happening. And that is the reason why the odds is developed. Now, and that's where the part is that I trying to get my brains around. What if we take the current zoning code in Fairfax? We strip it of all the ambiguous language, nothing about that it has to be beautiful or match the neighboring style. You just take the setbacks and the height regulations, everything that's in there. And then you add what in the odds is going to be that section eight that describes something about the quality of the building. The current art doesn't have it yet. It's the thing you folks still need to create. If you add that to the zoning code, then why would that not be the tool to regulate SB nine and SB thirty-five? What is the art doing differently than that? Why do we have two pieces? So it's actually a question, and I don't know the right answer to it. Can somebody answer that for me?
You know, through the chair, if I could, could start. This is David Wolfran talking. I think I would really appreciate it if, if David and Andy could talk about this, but let me start. The, the land use code or zoning code for the town of Fairfax is, as the commissioners know, quite dated. It needs significant update. As, as David Massington mentioned, there are within that document objective standards. He also mentioned that in terms of the odds that they're developing based on the Marin toolkit, there would be some combination of the objective standards in the current Fairfax zoning code and the odds. To me, as perhaps Commissioner, you're suggesting, that seems a bit complicated in terms of we have two different documents that we're working with and trying to blend them together. So I would appreciate a little discussion about that from maybe David and Andy in terms of what might be an approach to kind of bring these together. The idea of taking on a comprehensive zoning code update is very, very time-consuming. That can take literally years in certain communities. So in terms of the odds and the objective standards that we have in the zoning ordinance here in Fairfax, what, what's a good approach to kind of bring that together? To simplify it, streamline it for the commissioners, the public, the staff, all parties involved. David and Andy and perhaps Grace may have some ideas on this as well.
Yeah, so I, you know, it's a really good question. And of course, the reason that the county took, undertook this particular process with the, with the municipalities was because the larger zoning overhaul is very time-consuming. So they're trying to take, take the load off by providing this document. And that, you know, that's not to say that, you know, a lot of work doesn't have to go into kind of shrinking this document, but it's less than a full upgrade. I mean, you know, the, the alternate to use in the opticus odds would be to go through your zoning. And we would have to find every discretionary item. And we would have to, we'd have to find a way to reword it or to change it to work. You know, to respond to the caller's comment, sort of about why we, we are having to do this and why we can't use a zoning. It's that SB thirty-five invalidates any of the discretionary language. So if we, if Fairfax simply does nothing, a developer will essentially have no guardrails for development, because none of those will be considered on, upon his review. So I, I, I think that it was the desire of the county to provide this because it is, it is an easier route than trying to sort through the zoning. I think that was the intent. I think that that's true, but it's not the only way to get at this. I don't know, Andy, what do you think?
Well said. I don't know if I have much to add. This is a simplified approach. You know, where, where is the direction of, of zoning beyond this? It definitely has been going the way of objective standards and probably will continue to do so. So over time, it, it, it may be that your zoning code begins to join up with this base document of, of odds that we're, we're starting with now. You know, what, what does the evolution look like over time? We can't know that right now, but we, we want to, we want Fairfax to be in a place where you can be both certified and where you can be as protective as possible and as timely a process as possible. And, and that's what this odds document is setting out to do.
Yeah, no, I, I understand it. It's time is of the issue here, right? Otherwise we'll right, otherwise we'll get caught. I understand. So it's, it's basically a Band-Aid, and then in the future, these can merge and become one again. I mean, that's what I hear, and that makes a lot of sense. And it would indeed would probably take a decade before we're there. Developers have built a lot of buildings in that time.
I, I was just gonna say, I, I think there's an opportunity that, you know, through, after the adoption of these, there may be, there are sections that you'll probably be able to take from these and start crafting for commercial and other uses as well. So like, Andy's saying that, I mean, it, it's a good document. It's, it's just that it's, it's way too big for Fairfax and it needs to be cut down. But there's a lot of stuff in there that, that has a lot of qualities that I think Fairfax would embrace. So I think it's a good subject.
Yeah, yeah, it, but so it's the doubling up kind of thing that
I totally agree.
that got me wondering, like, what are we doing? But it's the time issue there. If I may add on to one more thing, because that is also important. This is about housing, which in my mind means it only applies to areas that are currently zoned for housing. In other words, if it's not zoned for that, the odds still don't apply, neither does SB thirty-five. You can't start build housing in a commercial zone. Well, you can to some degree, but for instance, only on the second floor. You still have to comply with, with the actual zoning code in Fairfax. Is that correct?
You're bringing up a great point, and this is a nuance that will certainly be part of our discussion going forward when we talk about the housing element specifically. I hesitate to, to dive in. I don't want to distract, but I'll just make a statement that the state law mandates that with our housing element, if, if we are suggesting that more than half of our very low and low units would be accommodated through mixed-use zones, then we have to enable a clause within those zones to allow for one hundred percent residential multifan, so basically,
okay.
it would allow for that residential on the ground floor.
Interesting. You said, you said, the person, the person You said, the percentage you mentioned, so the, if we need, if we need 490 units in town and the town allocates half of that, 200 something, and all those allocations are in areas that are zoned other than housing, then these other zone areas should by default then allow for housing from the ground floor somewhere.
And it's not just Fairfax that is experiencing. Yes, we're recognizing that we're, we, we are over in commercial square footage typically, definitely in office. So and, and we don't, when we're trying to avoid displacement, when we think about where will these new housing units go, it's more often than not in commercial zones that allow for mixed use.
Yeah, statewide, that's certainly true. And particularly after COVID. Oh, definitely. No, I understand that. Okay. I was just trying to get this straight in my head. Thank you. I'll pass it on to the next.
Commissioner Kelly has his hand raised.
Go ahead, Commissioner Kelly.
All right. Thank you, Chair. I, I just had a couple of quick comments that I wanted to get on the boards with regard to parking. As commissioners with headset about parking, this is an unusual town. It's very difficult to understand unless you're here and you're actually spending time here with regard to parking. It's the first time in my life, professional life particularly, that I've ever advocated parking. But I'll tell you that I do. There's not enough parking here because of the particular, the way we live. People are up in the hills. They need their cars. They come down. They need to park. Et cetera, et cetera. There's, there's lots of reasons that I could give you. It's a very unusual situation, frankly. So I'm going to just say that I, I support increasing the numbers that I saw there on the odds document. I do think that there should be a way to regulate those spots so that they're not near pedestrian zones. But the numbers themselves, I think, should be increased from what we just saw. I do not support the idea of unbundling. I think that there's a danger there of ending up with or structures that don't, are not associated with housing or somehow over the, over the long run, you could get folks that own parking spots that don't live in town even. And I don't think that's a good thing to, to offer. And then the last thing is I also do think that there should be, maybe this is a contradiction, but I don't think so. I do think that we should also incorporate a maximum numbers. So there, there's a zone, there's a range there that we should be shooting for. And that's it. Thank you.
If I could just really quickly comment on a couple of those things, because I think they're really good points. Something that's been brought up, you know, the, the, the fire issue in terms of having parking on the street, that, that is a, a serious issue. And that's something that we get to Berkeley Hills as well. And you do have narrow roads. Any of these developments will have to go through an approvals process, you know, in terms of making sure that they are compliant with the, you know, the fire marshals needs and all that. All the parking that we are talking about also is, is a number of on, off-street spaces that are provided. But there is to that question, you know, where do people that have that extra car park? So I think, I think that all that's a really good discussion and I think it makes a good point because I know in the Berkeley Hills, they're very cognizant of how parking on street is handled for that very reason for fire access.
Does anyone else have? There you go. Commissioner Newton.
Thank you, Acting Chair Swift. Yeah, some of the issues, I don't know if we want to start talking about the questions that you guys had laid out. In terms of the zone designations and whether they make sense, I think some of them probably do and others don't. And I definitely have misgivings, for example, about three stories in the downtown area in a way that could block the views of our downtown hills. And I, I do want to point out that our current general plan already talks about clustering in order to maximize open space. And so there's a lot of emphasis on preserving the natural environment in the town because we have such an amazing environment here. And so, you know, to the extent that we're talking about eco developments or eco villages where we are putting a premium on preservation of the unique and valuable natural resources. I think that's something people can get behind in the town. And so to some extent, I think that the zone designations kind of assuming the suburban environment like are missing. One of the things about our town, which is we're so crunchy granola. You know, we are of the earth and, and, you know, we like to get our feet muddy. And, and I just think that in some ways, these images don't really reflect how quirky and strange this town is. Anyway, so you know, I think that again, like the other commissioners, I'll be interested to see what, you know, we get to, to comment on in that regard. But, you know, to the extent that we can give incentives to developers to preserve wildlife corridors, to preserve the open spaces as much as possible, that would be, I think, something of value. Do we agree with the approach of removing the specific architectural typologies and styles from the odds? Yes, I do. I'm behind that. Just moving the signage design guidelines out of the residential odds makes sense. I would not include it in the odds, but I'm open to replacing. As you talked about, moving forward, we can potentially replace our existing signage with some version of the odds signage requirements, or at least consider that in a separate action. You know, there were a couple of questions that were dropped off, but I've already talked about open space, things that, that I think are important and we should emphasize. I, I don't know what I would want to do in terms of making options attractive to developers. Again, affordability, the more affordable, the more attractive, you know, it should be, the more that wildlife and open space, you know, is considered the better the bonus. But you know, it's just so hard to balance these things. And then the, the large sites, should there be style and form requirements? You know, I'm, again, I'm not, I think we've heard from the townspeople that cookie cutter is not something that anybody in this town is interested in. And obviously, ruling cookie cutters out when you're trying to be objective makes it, you know, 10 times more complicated. Just throw the cookie dough up on the, on the pan and see what it comes up. You know, it's, it's, it's a little nuts. So I don't really know what to tell you about that, except again, I'm very skeptical about, you know, these particular properties being the answer to our Reno woes or other issues that we've got, you know, challenges ahead of us. So those are my thoughts.
So Commissioner Jansen, do you want to go before I go? Please?
Okay, I will. Thank you. Going through the same questions. So the zoning designations, do they make sense? Yes, but there's one but. And that goes back to the hillside mostly. I think if we could look at slide 62, could you pull that up? I think the, the hillside development always has a lot to do with view corridors and there is a a very intentional separation between properties. And that is mostly to avoid exactly what you see in that circular image. That is, I think, what should not happen in Fairfax. And so I think that the, that in a large area that is currently your T three SN, I think you should bring in a T three edge and make sure that the site setbacks are accommodated because that's the important part. I think to which degree you have front setbacks, there's various little bit in Fairfax. There are old school homes and separate buildings that are nearly on the street. The downhill ones, of course, are typically very far away from it. So that varies a bit, but it is the side setbacks. It's the space between the buildings and, and, and that's missing in all these zones. So I think you could abuse T three to regulate that and apply it to, I, I would have to come up anything that's more than 20% or however you define it. The other component about the zones is, I mean, essentially it allows three stories everywhere in Fairfax, if you take the bonus. I, I haven't made up my mind about it. It's not that old building suddenly will become three feet because it all depends on, you know, how you're going to do it. I, I'm, I'm a little worried about that because three feet currently you only see because it's grandfathered in or because it is a downhill building, which of course, right, that lower floor sort of comes automatically. So I would be very careful with that and, and a detail point there, and that's been brought up before, and I still see it in there, there is no such thing as a two and a half story. It's either two or three because stories have occupants. And so please don't put that in a code. You can have ethics and cost base. That's grace, but not a story. Fire department exiting, your architects, you know, you're going to get in a lot of trouble with that. And it's just no one clear, sure. Yeah, I agree that the styles are not in the odds. I think that's a very good approach. That's always bugged me because you're always going to miss the styles that you want. And so, no, I, I, I completely agree that you want to do that by qualifying what's good and what's not good. Your, your section eight. For the signage, I think, you know, understanding that we're doing this now in the time of the interest and because we already have a signage component, yeah, let's keep it up. Make it simpler. Simpler is probably better. Although the section is very good in there, but I don't think there's a purpose of doing it. So then doing, keeping it simpler is probably the best. I agricultural use in Fairfax, I, I don't think that is a, I, I don't think there's, that's a big item. I, because it just doesn't happen, not much at least. So I probably, it's more for open space and I think the open space zone area should just remain like that and don't change them. And I, I don't think that they are, would be allocated anyway for housing. So I'm not sure that I understand that question completely.
Just to clarify, it's not like farms. It's like raised community beds.
Sure. But what, the, why would that be of importance within odds or zoning? It's something you can do in your yard. Right?
Because it could be done, done not in your yard, like in a shared open space.
To do it in open space? Okay. Well, that would be problematic, I think. Open space wants to be natural to the degree that we still have it. So I think if it's in your own yard, yeah, definitely, or a community yard or anything like that. But the areas zoned as open space should not be to grow tomatoes. That's, I don't think a good idea. Incentive for developers, yeah, I think they have to be there because otherwise nothing gets ever built and then we never get the housing that we need. So we must have incentives for them. And I think that's what the odds is trying to do. And I think where that is important is that for the larger sites, which is actually the sixth question, you do not want to define a typology. You want to leave that open because a lot of that is market driven and an eco village is, I mean, it's great if you built it that way and want it that way. But it is not, it's really a, a way how you operate your property. It operates the same as a mobile park. That's what it, it's not that it is a mobile park, but that depends on the architecture, which is something completely different. So I think you want to leave that open so that a developer can find the most economic way to do it, which is necessary because we need affordable housing. So if we are going to make beautiful ideas, but if it's going to be making prohibitive, then basically nothing will happen. And so that's what I had to say about that. And I, just the last point, the three story thing, I think it, we need to think it through a little bit. If it's uniform, it would be a problem. If it occasionally happens here and there, I don't see it as a problem, but how does that pencil out? I'm, I'm not clear on that. Thank you.
Can I just ask a question to clarify? So Robert, are you suggesting that for the larger sites that this should, that, that we should eliminate chapter 10 so that each developer has to comment and just kind of propose whatever they want and then they have to go before? Like, I guess I'm trying to understand the process that that would indicate.
Well, yeah, that's, it's a complicated thing. I think currently, right, there is a, you can have a PDD zone, in which case you can develop a plan like an eco village. You could do that under the current zoning and move forward with it, but it would be under review. So but I think the bigger question is the, if, if you're going to try to stipulate a certain style or development or, or layout upfront, then you're limiting that development to that particular thing, which means the others are precluded. And I, I don't think that the town should do that. You could have, you can have a, if you do a traditional layout and neighborhoods, that could be done very well too. So it's not either or, but you, you know, it could be done both ways. So I think in the interest of actually making it possible for a developer to do something, you don't want to stipulate what it is that the town thinks it needs to be. We could encourage it if we think it's a great idea, but you don't want to define it. I believe. And as I said, you can do all these different things that you want if it's zoned as a, 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 a PDD, which I think they actually aren't currently. That's a whole other discussion. I, I don't think we should go there tonight. But yeah, I, I, my, 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 the general point is that you want to limit yourself to defining exactly what it is that needs to be to a large degree to make it possible to develop it. Because otherwise we're back into the same place that we were before. Then nothing happens.
Thank you, Commissioner Jansen. Some more comments for me as I listen to everyone else. And I'm clarifying regarding Commissioner Kelly's comments, I think, about bundling or unbundling parking. And I may have misspoke, but I don't want to unbundle it. So that, you know, somebody can rent the space somewhere else. I don't like that concept. So if I said it incorrectly, I apologize for that. A question on our timeframes. I'm wondering why we're tying our odds development to the housing element timeline, because I think, I, I'm not sure. timeline, um, because I think, I, I'm not sure the two necessarily go together. And I think the odds takes a bit of time to get it right for this community. I think it's reasonable, with that said, to look at, the objective standards in our code and see how they fit into, the odds, so that we can maintain our objective standards that we do have. I would be interested, because I know we talked about the T3 edge before, so I'm going to have to go back and, and look at that and see how that fits into the zones you all defined. And then you mentioned incentives for builders, and I know at one point in time, and I think this was when we were, looking at Victory Village, that bonuses came up during that discussion of that project, and I know some of, um, our desires were that we needed to work on kind of a, a bonus, a density bonus schedule, so that we identified things that, in our mind, rated more of a bonus than other things. And I don't know if that's what you're specifically talking about, but just putting that out there, that we had a discussion on actually creating kind of a density bonus chart, if you will.
And does that exist somewhere that we can look at?
No, we never, I mean, we came up, we had discussions, we thought of things, we probably jotted some things down during the discussion of Victory Village, um, but we never, as a town, worked on that and created one. So, you know, just throwing that out there, that if we're looking at bonuses, then maybe we should relook how the town addresses them and what matters more to the community of possible bonuses than other things. And then just my last comment was, um, if somebody could answer, um, the public commenters' question about where they could review those documents, that would be helpful. Andy?
Thank you. If I may, yes, I'll start with that question. It's a great question. And, uh, by, uh, definitely by noon tomorrow, it will be front and center on our Fairfax Speaks website. With an ability to, to comment. And, uh, I would like to address your question about why are we talking about odds now? And how does that correlate with the housing element process? I kind of want to come at this, uh, from a couple of different perspectives. One of them is, with the fifth cycle housing element, there was a, a zoning change, a commitment to a zoning change that was then rescinded. And, and then, uh, within the amended housing element draft, that then was certified by HCD. There was a commitment for the town of Fairfax to consider additional rezonings over this eight-year period of time. However, there has not been any rezones. So in going forward with HCD, our team feels that we are putting the town of Fairfax, uh, with best foot forward by bringing together at the same time across the finish line, if not sooner than, that we get the objective development, excuse me, objective design and development standards, which we understand clearly from HCD, if we have them in process currently, that our, our best advantage for requesting and receiving certification would be to have those odds in place at the time of that request. So we do have the advantage that you've been looking at this for the past two years, or at least it was brought to you two years ago. Of course, there hasn't been subsequent, regular check-ins. There's been a few check-ins, but now we have an approach that's based on what we understood. The desire of the planning commissioners has been, uh, to simplify, to make sure that this is, going to result in as much as we can protect in, in high-quality Fairfaxian projects and, and development over time. So we're excited about working together with you, and we've assembled a team that we believe can get you across that finish line in a way that everyone can feel that their, their needs are being addressed.
Okay, and those, um, documents from HCD would be on the Fairfax site?
Oh, do you mean, um, the document for, um, the current housing element?
The response that you mentioned about, um, the rezoning and not rezoning.
Through, through the chair, if I could, I think the, the question had to do with the, the scoping session and the notice of preparation that went out for the scoping session for the environmental report for the housing element project. So Andy and I have spoken, and I think Andy just indicated that there are certain documents, including, I hope, the, the notice of preparation document, the timeline. We also talked about the safety element and other information that would be placed on the Fairfax Speaks website. So, uh, I intend to work with Andy further on that. And Andy, you know, please comment further on that if you need to. But the intent really is that the safety element, um, with modifications, the scoping document or the environmental, um, that those be placed on Fairfax Speaks, so that they can be accessible for review and potentially also the, the timeline, so that people are aware of the upcoming meetings, including the scoping session for the NOP.
Thank you. Commissioner Newton?
Thank you, uh, Dean Chair Swift. Yeah, one of my comments was just to clarify what Brenna had asked about during the public comment period, which I think David's clarified is item two on our tentative timeline. CEQA, EIR, notice of preparation, scoping meeting. The 30-day review period for the NOP is to begin approximately August 26th. So it sounds like that's been moved to like September 1st or so. Is that right?
No, that, that is not correct. The, the notice of preparation was distributed and the comment period has begun. And so in terms of the scoping meeting, the scoping meeting for the notice of preparation will be on September 13th. That is correct, but the scoping comment period has begun.
When the scoping posted for comment, that's the question that I think that...
I understand. And, and I mentioned that, um, Andy will be working to make sure that that documentation is put up on Fairfax Speaks, so that people are aware of that document, can comment on that document, and would be aware of that September 13th meeting.
But the 30-day review period started a couple of days ago, even though it's not on a public website yet.
Andy, you may want to comment on that. That was, you know, there was a full distribution to, to agencies to begin that, uh, that, that document does need to get up on the website, though.
Correct. That, um, that document is going to be on the website by noon tomorrow. I was unaware that that wasn't something that, um, our CEQA lead had, had, was able to make happen, so that, that we're making sure that that happens tomorrow. First thing.
All right. I don't, I guess I'll let the town attorney deal with the 30-day review period question. And I'll go to my other question, which, uh, has to do with one of the comments that former Mayor Egger raised in his public comment about the whole concept of sort of ministerial approval based on the odds, stripping the community of its right to comment on the proposals for large projects that may come to, uh, otherwise come to the town, uh, and the planning commission. And my understanding is that the reason for that is because of the state law. But it also sounds like we have some other options with respect to the large sites. And, and so with particular respect to the concept of, you know, pretty significant proposals and projects. Do you have an answer for that concern?
Yes, uh, when sites are, let's see, let's start with, um, when we have our sites inventory, and if we have a rezoning that is necessary in order to make up for the shortfall of capacity, in order to make our Rena, our regional housing needs allocation, which in Fairfax is 490 plus, um, the council has directed a 20% buffer. A buffer is recommended by HCD. So I believe that is 588. So in order to make up that shortfall, a rezoning is necessary. And HCD's rules are, for all rezonings, that objective standards must be, uh, applied for those rezones.
Okay, thank you.
And Commissioner Jansen has raised his hand again.
Go ahead, please.
I'm on mute, sorry. Um, you said rezone. I'm following up on the answer on the prior question. Can you explain that? That means, so if, if, if a site is not, if it's an open space, or it's something that is currently not or only partially allowing housing, does it need to be rezoned to be counted in Rena? Or does it not?
Well, it's, it's a little complicated what you're asking. If, if you say that it was partially allowed, uh, to have residential, so if, if you're allowing it at 100%, are you referring to the Town and Country site, where only 10% of the site may be used as residential? Are you asking that kind of specific question? Or do, do you mean otherwise, a site that is along Sir Francis Drake, uh, where maybe right now you would not be allowed to have housing on the first floor?
Well, I think the only open space is not allowed to have housing, right? In form, in some form, all other zones can have that. So it's partial. It's not a partial, except for, um, OH.
And, uh, commercial recreation, um, so the Town and Country site is the one where there's very strict limitations on how much residential would be allowed.
Right, right. So if you want to, if sites are allocated, for the Rena numbers, they do not have to be zoned as housing, or do they? Because all, if it is, so if it's partial, right, I mean, it's the same for, uh, uh, CC or CH. They are allowed on the first floor, so there are limits on it. But so if you, as, if we as town assign them to be counted all over the place, and if you add up all the sites, they're all different, and not all of them are residentially zoned. So if somebody wants to develop housing there, he, he or she does not need to rezone it, or do they? And so I, because you were, just in the answer to the prior question, you were indicating that they had to be rezoned. That's the confusing part.
I, I am a little concerned that we're straying from the, the agenda by, uh, with this conversation. I, I, I can say in general, if, if a site was used in the fourth or fifth cycle, then, um, if they're to be used in this cycle, then they must be both, uh, using objective standards and not require conditional use permit in order to allow for residential.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other, oh, any other, um, last comments, questions from discussion from the commissioners? If not, I think we're done. Have we answered all of staff's questions tonight?
I believe our questions have been answered. I'll let Dave speak for staff.
So through the chair, uh, yes, I think you have answered our questions. We've got many notes here, and I think that our next step will be to, to get together the team and staff to basically debrief from this meeting, kind of go through all of the comments that we received from the commissioners and the public, and kind of put together, um, a work list of things we need to address to respond to the comments we heard tonight in terms of updating and revising the information that was presented to you tonight to bring it back to you on September 28th. So our next step is to debrief, create our, our work list, complete that, and bring back a revised draft for your consideration on September 28th. Thank you.
All right. So with that, I'll ask for a motion to close. Let's not all rush.
I think Trace is ready.
So do we have a second? Mimi makes the motion?
Second.
Would you like a roll call?
Oh, sure.
Okay, Kelly?
Aye.
Jansen?
Aye.
Newton?
Aye.
Chair Swift?
Aye. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.